Good evening. It is 5:30 according to Verizon, so we're going to call a meeting to order. Remind you to turn your cellphone to silent or vibrate and let's all stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chris, would you take the role, please?
Councilmember Dowby.
Here.
Councilmember Rowe.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember Strebe.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Item B is our consent agenda, and I would like to ask for a motion, but before you do that, we're going to pull B2, and so eliminate that from your agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd make the motion to approve the agenda with the removal of item two.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Matt. Okay. Any questions? Take the roll.
Do you want me to go and read it?
Yes.
Okay. Items on the consent agenda. Minutes from regular meeting number 22 on June 19, 2018, is presented. Civil Service Commission Police Officer Entrance Eligibility List of June 18, 2018. Civil Service Commission Police Supervisor Sergeant Promotional Eligibility List of June 18, 2018. Approved payment to the Iowa Department of Public Safety in the amount of $10,890 for the yearly line and terminal charge of the Iowa Online Warrants and Articles System. Approved the purchase of two 2019 Ford Utility Police Interceptor Vehicles from Stivers Ford of Waukees, Iowa, in the amount of $60,884, and the purchase and installation of the police equipment necessary for basic police functions in the amount of $23,400. Resolution Number 179, 2018, authorized payment of $11,760.81 for the city's membership fee and financial support of the Area 15 Regional Planning Commission for fiscal year July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019. Resolution Number 190, 2018, accepting the work as final and complete for the Beach Phase Two Contract C and authorizing final payment of $5,862.35 to Maher Plumbing and Heating. Beer and/or liquor applications for shims at 536 East Main Street. Smoking Joe's Tobacco and Liquor Outlet Number Five at 1115 Albia Road. Champion Bowl at 2601 Romer Avenue. Otomo Pro Balloon Races at the Greater Otomo Park Jimmy Jones Shelter. All applications pending final inspections.
Are there any questions about the consent agenda? We have a motion and a second pending. Take the roll.
Councilmember Dowby.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Burke.
Epstein.
Okay. Item C is approval of tonight's agenda, and before you vote on that, I'd pull D2. Mr. Hoffman would like to come at a later date, so we're going to pull D2. Is there a motion for approval of tonight's agenda as presented?
Move approval with that change. Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dowby.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Reports from city officers, boards, and commission. I just want to make the public aware, we have made one adjustment. As you know, our normal meetings are the first and third Tuesdays of each month, but due to a conflict in scheduling, our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be on July 24, same time, 5:30 here in the chambers. At this time, I'd like to turn to City Administrator Andy Morris and have him comment on a few of the other items. Andy, you have the floor.
Your Honor, if I could interrupt real briefly, the Board of Health meeting that was scheduled for the 17th will also be on the 24th of July.
Oh, thank you for that.
The same, at 5:30 here in council chambers.
Okay. Okay. Thanks for that, Joni. Okay, Andy?
All right. Very good. Thank you, Mayor. The items that you see listed, the one item, the city internal policy, the construction project notices. You may recall discussions I've had with council and members of staff. This is an item that I worked with Councilwoman Burke. In addition to that, Larry Seals, the Public Works Director. This internal policy, which you should have, I believe it's in the consent agenda portion of the meeting, sets forth, quite frankly, the notifications that the city gives to the public regarding various construction projects and the timing of those projects. I would just add one item that I don't think a lot of people realize. I didn't know it until I did a little bit more research, but we really didn't have anything that set forth notices as it related to construction. We had notices for contractors, but this speaks pretty clearly to that point of notifying the public. Many of these activities are already being undertaken, just to be clear on that. And again, I appreciate Ms. Keith and the work that she has done on that. This is an internal policy. This will be something that council doesn't need to approve or memorialize. It's simply something that staff will do. A couple of other items, I know here in a little while that Chief McAndrew is going to speak to the issue of 12-hour shifts. That's something that council has asked about. I do want to share with the rest of council an item that I've shared with Councilman Stevens, in addition to that, Mayor Lozio, and that is a civilian officer to assist with parking enforcement. As you may well know, the parking enforcement gentleman we had working for us, his last day, I believe, was Thursday of last week. Is that correct to you? So instead of that being somewhat scattershot and us trying to pick off officers, staff is going to recommend that, because we have some available monies in the budget, that you allow us to pursue advertising for a civilian. That civilian officer will carry out parking enforcement for us, perhaps not as robust as we've had previously, but I feel, and I think staff does as well, it's better than what we have right now, which is somewhat attention when we can get to that. I'm sorry.
Sorry to interrupt. Wasn't one of the arguments prior to having the sworn officer on there that we'd have some trouble in the court system with having a civilian officer?
That's a point well taken. I don't know if Ms. Keith can make a comment on that?
I would rather have a certified officer, but if I can't have one, I can utilize a civilian, and we'll just have to deal with it in the court system if it becomes an issue. Most people, when they get a parking ticket, will get it taken care of. For those that contest it, will have to deal with it and let the court decide.
We're not against the idea, certainly, of hiring an officer, but we really need to have someone dedicated to that. And I realize officers are busy. Often, as they get pulled off, that's why I'm recommending that we do hire a civilian, because that's all they do. But in terms of the legal process, I think the tickets would have the same standing. The other item that I have listed, again, is the, I have one other item. In fact, I'll just, I'll go to that last one, and then we'll come back to the presentation, if it pleases council, on the 12-hour shifts. The Finance Committee, you may recall, beginning of this year, a Finance Committee was formed. We've had one meeting already. Another meeting is scheduled for the 16th of this month. That's at 5:00 in Room 108 here at City Hall. At that meeting, we're going to be talking about the Moody's report that the city received recently. I know that was discussed at a previous meeting. The mayor gave a presentation on that as well, a conveyance. But that meeting, again, that will be on the 16th of this month, 5:00 in Room 108. With that, Mayor, I will defer back to you. Again, Chief McAndrew is with us, and he's going to give a presentation on the 12-hour shifts.
Good evening, Chief. You were interested to hear your comments, and you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'll keep this real short and just answer any questions you might have about the 12-hour shifts. Basically, we're in the same boat, or maybe a little bit worse off than we were when we first started talking about the 12-hour shifts. We've lost three officers, and we've gained three officers. So we really haven't gained any on getting more personnel on the street that will be available to work patrol. So we're still just in a holding pattern until we get more people hired. We're having a difficult time hiring people right now. The last round, the round before this one, we hired one person off the civil service list out of about 30 applicants. The current list that you certify tonight consists of one person. And I can give you those numbers if you'd like, but basically, we had 27 applicants show, that we accepted to test. About 17 showed up. Over half of them failed the post-test. Eight of them made it to the physical agility test, and of those eight that made it that far, only one passed the physical agility test. So we have one person on our list, and keep in mind that we have a 50% failure rate once they get that far. They have backgrounds, polygraphs, and physicals, MMPI tests. So our hiring right now is not looking real good. We're not getting good pools of applicants, and a lot of that's just due to the economy and the unemployment rate. Law enforcement suffers when the economy is good, and law enforcement suffers when unemployment is really low. So I'd answer any questions for you. Basically, we're just on a holding pattern on the 12-hour shift until we get more people hired.
Okay.
I don't have any questions. Thanks for the update, Chief. And I know that you've been working hard to try to get new officers, and I know that that's a difficult situation, but it's a dire situation. We, as a council, have committed to public safety and, you know, put our budget in an uproar to attend to trying to get more officers hired. And I know there's a process and there's rules to follow, but I think, you know, as a city, as a council, and as employees of the city, we need to look at this as a number-one priority on trying to figure out either how to get more officers here or go back to the table and talk about the merits of 12-hour shifts, you know, versus the current situation that we have. I know that there's numbers out there, and those have varied, and they've gone back and forth with the union and with your department, but I think that we need to have ongoing conversations on a weekly basis about how to solve this problem. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Just quick curiosity. So what's your actual patrol staff number right now, the ones that you actually have on staff?
Well, it depends on how you look at it. Right now, I have 16 patrolmen.
That can go out on their own.
That can go out on their own. We've got, and I'm going to count the three that we have on PTO, because they're going to be coming off soon. Unless there's something really, a disaster happens, we're going to have three coming on to patrol. So if we went to the 12-hour shifts, that would be four patrolmen per shift, which just isn't enough. Keep in mind, I don't have anybody injured right now. Normally, I have at least one that's injured. I've got some people that have been on paternity, and they're on vacations, and that does leave very many for the 12-hour shifts. So we just don't have, simply don't have the numbers yet to go to that. I would hate to just say that we're never going to go to 12-hour shifts, because that's our goal. It just may take a couple of years for us to get there, where we get that many hired.
So, sorry, I want to back up just a second.
Okay.
So you have 16 on now, and then three that are getting ready to come on, or does that 16 count those three that are getting ready to come?
That's going to count those three.
Okay.
And I've got a whole sheet here I can give you down. I've put together, we start out with 42 positions, and then you start taking off all of our SROs and our task force people, and then you take off command staff. It gets down to 31, and counting, two of those guys are working for investigations. I've got the National Guard guy in there. He's not going to be any good to us until April of 2020. He just left the other day, actually hasn't even left yet, on his year-long tour. We have five open positions right now. If I could hire five right now, that would be, that would be great. So basically, I have 16 people, patrolmen that are available.
But even if you did get, even if you did get these five from the civil service eligible, even if you did get five, it would still be another year, essentially, before they would be, before they'd be on the street.
Yes. Just figure, we're going to, we're going to start advertising now. Just figure, a year from now is when those people will be on patrol, if I got five hired. When you throw in the academy and the PTO and the advertising for the positions.
Just out of curiosity, and I might have asked this before, I'm not sure, so pardon me if I have. Do we ever have any luck with getting certified officers that are applying for positions down here?
Not very much luck, and usually, we end up getting, if we get any certified, it's usually what we refer to problem people that are living in other departments. They're not coming here because they want to be here in Otomo. They've left a job for some reason, and usually, it's something that disqualifies them as far as us hiring them. We did have one certified on the last list. I was concerned about him, because he's worked for three or four different departments, and he made it to our list, and then at the last minute, he pulled out and just left. We don't know why he left. But we do have those types of certified officers out there. We call them gypsy cops that like to bounce around for some reason. So we really don't have any luck with the certifies.
Thank you. Yes, Victor?
Yeah. Furthermore, we need to come up with some ideas. You know, six months ago, when it was six months after, you know, we had heard that officers were getting burned out and were even unable to do their jobs adequately. This is six months after that. So it's been a year since we tried to institute that policy. And to be hamstrung by the process and to be no further toward the goal than we are right now after a year, you know, it makes me, it makes me wonder about the process, and it also makes me feel for those officers who are still out there doing the great job that they do.
As far as the process is concerned, it's been brought up that our written test might be, the Otomo Police Department's written test that they take might be discriminatory. I'm trying to nix that rumor. We don't write the test. It's a state-mandated test. The Iowa Law Enforcement Academy comes up with that test. We can't come up with our own. In order for them to get into academy, they have to pass this standardized test that all departments across the state use for testing.
That's good clarification, Chief. And I would like to just share something, and Andy, you had a comment?
No, I'm sorry, Mayor. Actually, the chief answered that, so I'll defer to you.
For council information, last week, the chief was at a community meeting, and I'd normally go to that, but it had a conflict in my schedule and couldn't. But five people, five individuals came up and made a comment to me that the community had a lot of questions about policing in Otomo, and the chief did an excellent job of answering their questions and giving them some good information, just like this test is a state-sponsored test. It's not something we do. They had no idea that. They had no idea of the physical agility test. There's just a lot of misunderstanding, and I just would say thanks for the great job you did. And the people that spoke were knowledgeable and informative citizens, a former mayor, Dale Euling, a member of the Housing Authority, just to give a few, and they were very complimentary. So I appreciate it. It's a struggle, and we want to get something done, and I agree, it's taking longer than any of us expected.
Yeah, I would echo your sentiments too, and Councilman Rowe and Strebe's. We knew from the start this wasn't going to be an easy, easy thing to accomplish. And, but I don't think that's any reason to pull back and say, well, we're just not going to be able to make this happen. I think it's just going to be a hard bro to hoe, and we're going to have to take the time to get it done. We made a commitment to the officers that we wanted to make their lives better, give them more time off. We obviously know how stressful their job is. We've ridden with them, and we've seen what they see. We have certainly haven't experienced everything and certainly wouldn't want to, or we'd be in that job. But I think we owe it to them to see this thing through. And if it takes a year, it takes a year. We know if we stop the process now, then they're going to go right back to the job and the, and the struggles they were in before, getting no time off with their families. I think we at least see this thing through, and if we do get a roadblock where it's just, you know, not possible, which I don't foresee it happening, then we'll have to pull the plug on it. But we just need to keep going on, and eventually, I think, we'll get there. It's going to take time, but we, we made a commitment to them, and a commitment that we would get this done, and that the chief tells us it's going to take a couple of years. Hopefully, it won't take two years, but if it does, then we'll just have to wait the two years, in my opinion, unless something unforeseen comes up, and we get a different opinion from the chief. We'll just see this. In my opinion, we need to see it through and take the time. You know, these things just don't happen overnight. But I certainly would hate to go back, you know, on the commitment we gave to try to make their lives a little bit easier. So that's just my two cents.
I do want to let you know, just so you're aware, that when we went to 42 officers, that is the bare minimum we need.
Right.
It's not going to be, we're still going to have people injured and so forth. So we're not going to be like Marshalltown, where they have extra people.
Right.
The 42, when we get to that, is going to be just enough to go to these 12-hour shifts.
Right.
And do that without a lot of overtime and so forth. So I want to bring up the downtown parking enforcement position. It'd be ideal if we could have that as a sworn position. We're not going to get there. We don't have the sworn officers to dedicate someone downtown like that. So although it's not ideal, it would, it's better than nothing. Right now, I don't have anybody to send downtown to do that. So if we could go to a civilian, I think that would relieve a lot of the complaints downtown. I think the businesses would be happy to see that, because everyone knows, everyone downtown, everyone downtown right now knows that Daniels has left on guard duty. So they're going to start parking illegally, and we're going to have complaints anytime. If we could get a part-time person in there working 20 hours, hit it Tuesday, Thursday, and then shake it up a little bit and change their schedule, they never know when we're going to come down there and start writing tickets. Most of them will start parking where they should for the right amounts of time. So I think that also, we've got five open positions. Based on the last two testing series that we went through, it doesn't look like we're going to get five hired this next testing cycle. We've got that money sitting there that's not being spent. We could use some of that money to fund this civilian downtown, and that might last for a couple of years, where we can use that civilian. Yes?
Councilman Rowe?
You know, to your point there, and also to Councilman Strebe's point about the process, and I know that there's a lot of legal things that have to be done, and I don't, I don't suppose anybody's suggesting that we, that we look at altering any of that. But I'm wondering if the point's coming to where we need to approach our marketing just a little bit differently on this, on these open positions to try to maybe attract some talent away from some of the other communities. You know, I'm not sure whether that is, but you know, you said earlier that, that in a good economy, it's hard to hire police officers. Well, in a good economy, it's hard to hire anybody. I mean, the company that I work for is struggling very hard with that right now, and you know, sometimes you have to get a little bit inventive to attract talent in a good economy. So I'm wondering, you know, there is, there is money that's not being spent right now that's dedicated to the police department. Is there something else that we could be doing to try to attract some officers that might be already certified that we could get on the street faster than a year from now? You know, I don't suppose that this is something that the city's ever approached before. If they have, it's probably been a good amount of time, but you know, it is to the point, you know, we've been talking about this for a year, and likely to nobody's fault, we still sit here in this position. So the things that we're doing, given a combination of a lot of things, obviously, just aren't working. So do we need to approach something just a little bit differently? And maybe that means, you know, possibly some small hiring bonuses or something of that nature to attract somebody in the door that wouldn't, that wouldn't otherwise look at us, you know? And I know that, that we had at least brushed the surface of that conversation a year ago, and it kind of fell flat at that point, but we weren't at the point that we are now, where our officers have been out working innumerable hours of overtime and not having weekends off and things like that. So maybe the, maybe the time has come that we start having those, probably to Administrator Morrison and Finance Director Jay's discomfort, we have those conversations to see what we can do, maybe, to offer a little bit of incentive to get a certified officer here.
Right. If you remember from that conversation also, we had built into the union contract that we could give, bump people up on the pay scale, and that's still, we have used that for a couple of officers. They don't start out at the beginning wage. If you're certified, you come in and you've been on the department for five years. Now we can bump them up on the pay scale, which is, that would be an incentive for someone. But what we have found is, is that people aren't coming here for the money. They're coming here because they've got family or something like that. We're competing with Altoona, Johnson, all the suburbs up around Des Moines. They're all hiring right now, and so a lot of those people that we had coming down here that just graduated from Ames, they were coming down here for a couple, two, three years. They're not coming to test with us anymore because they're hiring up there, and that's where they want to ultimately be. But back to the pay, we could look at that and offer some kind of bonus. We'd probably want some kind of contract, so they don't come here, take the bonus, and then move on.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, it can't be a one-handed deal, but...
Yeah. I'm open to anything. I'm open to any suggestions. I know the union was going to suggest a couple websites that we advertise on, but we're advertising, it's in our annual report, we advertise all over the place. We actually, during the hiring process, started asking applicants, how did you hear about the police department was, how did you hear that we were taking applications? And we found out that we were advertising Des Moines Register, and nobody was saying, I heard it from the Des Moines Register. They're all saying, I heard it by word of mouth here in Otomo. So that's when we started just advertising more in our local, on our local radio stations and such. So, and that actually ended up in a little bump in the number of applicants we had. But I'm open for any suggestions as far as where we advertise. It's just, I think we've looked at that a lot, and I don't know of any other additional places we can advertise for that position.
Well, I guess, I guess I would just lobby that we could have a sit-down at some point and kind of look at some inventive approaches, be it through advertising or through stipends or something to try to attract some new officers. I guess that would be my ask.
Yeah. At our diversity being, the other day, Andy Mall, I'm trying to think of who he's with.
Legacy Foundation.
The Welcome and Connect Service is his.
Yes, yes. And he said he might have some ideas. I think we're meeting with him next Thursday to see about some, just what he can do to help us with attracting recruits. So we're trying.
Good.
Mr. Mayor, just, this is by no means the last comment. I do want to share with you an item that staff has talked a little bit about, available monies, and Councilman Rowe's statement is well taken. Obviously, you know, we have certain financial challenges and we need to address those. One of the items that we, I think anyway, that we should give some attention to is the, and this may not, I know Councilman Rowe spoke about this when he came on board, and that's animal control. And I know Jeff Williams does a good job for us, and, but he's, he's doing that when his duties really are to be a full-time officer. In the previous community I was in, a town, again, half the size of this one, we had three full-time animal control officers, full-time. And I don't think it's a stretch to employ at least one or two, particularly to the extent that the chief has some monies available. And I'm not strategizing this as we're sitting up here, but the brief conversation that Ms. Keith and Chief McAndrew and I had was, that would be something staff would want to explore. If we got to the point where we had to hire additional officers, then those animal control folks would, you would, quite frankly, you would move off the mark for financial reasons and not employ them any longer. But I think it's fair to say, from the animal control perspective, we, we have a lot of, we have a lot of work to do in that category.
Okay. Skip?
Yeah, Chief, I'm glad to see that you're working toward this civilian person for parking enforcement. I know in years gone by, we've had numerous people that have done that, and it seemed to work very well. The presence of someone there really helps. And maybe I missed, but how long do you think it's going to take to get somebody hired?
For the civilian position? I don't know.
Does that have to be by civil service test?
I don't believe so. Yeah.
Answer's no, yeah.
I don't know what kind of pool we'll get for that. I don't know what kind of pool we'll get for that. If you talk to any restaurants around town, you're going through the same thing where you're at, you can't find anybody to work right now. Uh, so I don't, I can't tell you how soon it would take. We might have, uh, we might not have anybody apply. I really don't know. We've had, uh, good parking enforcement attendance in the past and then we've had not so well. It's just kind of gone up and down. It really depends on the person. You've got to find the right person that will go out and do that. Um, can't say a whole lot about, but we've had a couple of good retired, uh, people that came in and did an excellent job. We had others that, that don't like the confrontation because it is a confrontational position and a lot of civilians work a part-time for probably, is it $12 an hour? Don't want to have to deal with people coming out and tearing up their tickets and, and calling names and, and, and all the stuff that goes along with you issuing people, uh, tickets. So it's very difficult to find that right person. But, uh, all we can do is try.
But you are going to start advertising soon, I...
As soon as I'm given permission and Andy, uh, goes with it and...
That's right.
As long as there's more strong objections.
Councilman Stevens, appointed, your point is well taken. We did have a discussion this afternoon. We wanted to inform Council of this unless Council objected, but all items being equal, we're going to start advertising pretty quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good discussion, good points, and we'll keep revisiting these topics. Uh, item E on our agenda is if there's anyone in the audience that wants to address an item on the agenda, now's the time to, uh, fill out a form. Seeing none, we'll move to item F.
Approve the purchase of 10 stainless steel toilets totaling $14,437.50 for the Parks Department. Recommendation: Approve the purchase of 10 stainless steel toilets for the total purchase price of $14,437.50.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Any discussion? Gene?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Parks Department received two bids for 10 stainless steel toilets. Plum Supply bid $16,087.30 and Hickinbottom bid $14,437.50. These toilets will be installed in the restrooms at Atumal Park, Wildwood Park, and the Jimmy Jones Shelter. The porcelain toilets in these parks have been frequently vandalized and broken in the past. The stainless steel toilets are vandal-proof and indestructible. There is $16,357.27 budgeted for these toilets. $3,642.73 was spent from this account last fall for roofing materials for the campground shower house, and the bids are attached.
Okay. Any questions for Gene?
I have. What's the lifespan on these again?
Well, they last indefinitely because they're basically indestructible. They don't, uh, corrode or rust.
What about any internal components?
The only thing that can really go wrong is the wax seal underneath the toilet, but that can be easily replaced by removing and replacing the wax seal.
So if we were to put regular porcelain toilets in instead, what would the cost of that be? If you had to guess, I don't expect a, a solid answer.
Approximately 200 for the toilet and another 100 to 200 for the labor cost.
Okay. So you're looking at, and, and those toilets, how often do they get vandalized?
Well, it's difficult to say. I think we discussed last fall at the CIP that, uh, in the past six or seven years, there've been about seven toilets broken at these various restrooms. So...
Mr. Mayor? I might just make a comment on this. I know this is something we've talked about a little bit on, on the council level and the staff level. Obviously, w- we're going to do what a majority of the council members want. I, I can just speak to you from previous experience in some other communities to, uh, Gene's point. The, the porcelain ones are, are, they're just very good candidates for vandalism. And I will tell you, in communities I've been in before that had the, the stainless steel toilets or the steel toilets, they may get banged up and bruised a little bit, but, um, they, they have a much, they have a much longer lifespan and they aren't as, as much as attractive nuisance as I would argue the porcelain ones are.
Yeah, I, I guess I would just, uh, to, to Administrator Morris's point, it seems like a fairly decent investment for the, uh, for the parks to, to spend this money upfront. And you're going to be saving, I'm assuming, a considerable amount of labor for any damage that is done at, at, at any point in the future for having to replace toilets. And you've basically eliminated that with these, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. They'll help to discourage vandalism. And we just had another toilet damaged at Wildwood Park over the weekend. They ripped off the seat. These toilets don't have seats because they're built into the stainless steel structure itself. And we've also been locking restrooms at, uh, Union Park and Foster Park permanently unless the shelters are rented because of the vandalism also. Um, we also locked the Jimmy Jones Shelter restrooms overnight for the same reason, vandalism. So, you know, one of the reasons is let people know we're serious about putting a stop to vandalism in the parks.
Thank you.
Yeah, other questions or comments?
Yeah, um, I don't want to rain on your parade by any means, and I know you're, you're trying to do what you need to do. But it seems to me like, I, I'm getting conflicting reports. One person says there was about eight vandalized in the last few years, and then somebody else says, no, we only had three vandalized in the last several years. The one today, as I understand, was just a lid. I just learned that a while ago. Uh, that's 10 bucks or less. Stainless steel, it's hard for me to believe if you took a ball bat to it that you couldn't dent it. And if you have to replace that, you're looking at another, uh, what is it, $1,400 to replace it. You can buy a porcelain toilet for about 150 bucks, and I would venture to guess that our employees could install that in about an hour, hour and a half. Um, very little labor. It, I don't know, it, it, it concerns me. If we had real nice restrooms with tile walls, uh, tile floors, real nice ones, then I could probably understand it if we had a lot of vandalism. But I'm having a difficult time getting my arms around this. And as you recall, Gene, we had a meeting years ago and we talked about the roof and, and, uh, we reached an agreement that you had fixed that roof out of that, uh, those proceeds, which in my opinion was, was good. But I'm just, I'm having a problem because I hear one thing one time and then something else another time. I, I would almost recommend that we table this till we get, uh, more information. I've talked to some of the council people and they said they didn't know anything about it, any of the details. I wonder if we should talk about it some more and it's whatever the council decides, I'm okay with, but, uh, I just, I think it's a lot of money for something that maybe is not needed.
Mr. Mayor, just to know, yeah, well, staff will certainly do that. The, the, uh, the project is funded. It's bonded money and it would, it would come out of, uh, Fund 309 for Parks Projects. But if, if you want a more composite picture of the actual number of toilets that were, uh, destroyed, the porcelain toilets, we'll certainly do that. I, it's fair to say, again, staff's recommendation is still going to be, uh, the stainless steel. But if Councilman Stevens wishes to table that, that, that's a legislative decision. So you all do what you need to do.
Well, I'm just one councilperson, but I, you know, I, I don't think, uh, some of us on the council received enough information on this, so that...
Okay, so what's your pleasure, Council? We have a motion made and seconded to approve the recommendation, the staff recommendation. You can vote that down and modify it, or you could amend it. Uh, it's your, your decision.
I, I, I would recommend that we table it. Let's take a harder look at it and then Gene can bring it back to us.
Is there, is that a motion?
That's an affirmative motion, yes.
Is there a second for the amendment?
One second.
Okay, so we need to vote on the amendment first to, uh, table the purchase at this time and have Gene come back with some additional information, um, both factual and financial. Okay, take the roll on the amendment.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Okay. So at this point, the, uh, a motion to purchase has been overruled by the amendment. Uh, and at this point, we didn't give any time to come back just at a future meeting. Joanie, is that okay? All right. Okay. Thank you, Gene. Item two.
Bid review and award contract for the asbestos removal at 121 South Iowa Avenue. Recommendation: Award the contract for asbestos removal at 121 South Iowa Avenue to Weston McKee with McKee Construction and Abatement in the amount of $14,900.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendations presented, Jerome.
Second.
Thank you, Holly. Any questions for, hi, Jody?
Hello there, Mayor and Council.
Good evening. You have the floor.
Thank you so much. Um, the city accepted bids for asbestos removal demolition and the water service abandonment at this property until, um, June 26th. We received three bids for asbestos and they were pretty wide varying bids. And we received one bid for demolition, which is the next item on the agenda. Weston McKee was the low bidder at $14,900 for this project. Um, it's a, a high asbestos bid, but this house has asbestos siding on the outside of it and it has vermiculite in the attic, which has to be, uh, vacuumed out and handled in a special way. So, uh, that was one of the reasons why the asbestos bids were as high as they were.
Any questions for Jody? I think she's answered the question about the high variance in the bids.
Yeah.
Hearing no questions, take the roll.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Thank you, Jody.
Thank you.
Bid review and award contract for the demolition and water service abandonment at 121 South Iowa Avenue. Recommendation: Award the contract for demolition and water service abandonment at 121 South Iowa Avenue to environmental edge in the amount of $15,900.
Move the recommendation as presented, second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jody.
Uh, this is the one bid that we received for demolition and water service abandonment. And, um, it's, uh, it's within the range of what a few other bids have been when the house is as, um, a similar size. I guess I don't really know why we just received one demolition bid. This is the first time that that's happened in quite a while. Uh, so I don't know if that's because contractors are busy or, or what the problem is. I hope it's a, I hope it's a fluke.
Any questions for Jody?
Jody, you're comfortable with it though, however, only got one bid. It's in, within the realm, you said, of what the average is?
It is within, it is within the range, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes, thank you.
Bid review and award contract for the 2018 RFP parking ramp supplemental repairs and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. Recommendation: Award the contract for the 2018 RFP parking ramp supplemental repairs to Turner Concrete in the amount of $6,200.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendations presented. Second.
Thank you. Good evening, Dwight. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the contractor will be responsible for saw cutting, removing and disposing of approximately 335 square feet of concrete slab on grade, placing and finishing a five-inch Portland cement concrete patch on compacted base. An RFP was sent out to four contractors for this work. One bid was received and opened on June 20th, 2018 at 2:00 PM. Low bidder for the work was Turner Concrete in the sum of $6,200, uh, included in your packet is the, uh, it's bid tab. Uh, as you're aware, we're finishing up the parking ramp repairs. After the work was done, we were made aware of another repair that needed to be done. And there was a unit price that the contractor had given us that could do this work, but it was cost prohibitive. So instead of having that contractor do the work, we decided that we would go through an RFP process and get someone that can do the work a little bit cheaper. So that's why we have this listed as supplemental repairs to the parking ramp. And farther on in the agenda where we have the, uh, closeout of the parking ramp project, I have a little more information I can give you at that time.
Okay. Are you comfortable, Council? Okay, take the roll.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Go ahead, Dwight.
Uh, this was supposed to be given to you by, uh, Larry and unfortunately Larry's was, uh, called away and not able to, uh, present this. So I will, uh, uh, go through the slides for you and provide you a little bit of a narration and any questions that you might have, I'll be within happy to try to answer. But as you are aware, we finished up, uh, one roundabout. The, uh, the Richmond and Ferry Street, uh, roundabout is substantially complete and we've gotten started on the Albia Road, uh, Waplo Street extension. And, uh, we just wanted to give you a little bit of a, um, update on how things have progressed on this project. Giving you a little bit of history, uh, as you recall, we hired Shive Hattery to take a look at three intersections where we had a high incidence of traffic accidents. And these are the Richmond Ferry, the Al, Al Waplo and Second and Marion intersections. And, uh, from those studies, it was determined that, uh, uh, roundabouts would, at these intersections, would reduce the rate of incidents. Um, the City of Atumal cooperation with Shive Hattery applied for the funding through the Iowa DOT's Transportation Safety Improvement Program, and we received a grant for two of the intersections in the amount of $500,000. Uh, so the Richmond and Ferry roundabout, which I told you is substantially complete, uh, it was contracted to DC Construction and it was funded, uh, in part through the Iowa DOT TSIP grant. Uh, the estimated cost is $250,000 to complete. Uh, this project was substantially complete and it was opened June 26th, 2018. Here you can see we have the before and after pictures from, uh, these aerials from, uh, uh, the drone that we have. And, uh, you can see the substantial difference there. Whoops. Okay, I have a little video for you that can show you how the, uh, transportation progresses around, uh, the roundabout. You can see the semi going there. Um, we were kind of hoping that he would have made full use of the roundabout, but he just kind of passes through. But as you can see, the traffic is going through fairly orderly. Uh, it's not a real busy time, but, uh, we're confident that even at times when a lot of people are going to school or, or what have you, that this isn't going to create any problems. Okay, and the next slide that we have, Chad was able to find this video on, uh, Facebook. And, uh, we reached out to Jeff Diltz and asked if it'd be okay for us to use it. And what he has is an aerial that shows, uh, over that roundabout, a large school bus traversing the roundabout. So you'll be able to see what we have for spatial considerations there. You'll see his rear tires do go up on that sloped edge there on the interior. But you also might want to note too, that his right front tire is probably four or five feet still away from that outside edge of the roundabout. So it seems to be handling this roundabout quite nicely. So the Albia Road and Waplo Street, which we've just started, they are actually in the processes of doing removals right now. Uh, we contracted that to Dersh Construction in the amount of $765,858. And this is funded... We contracted that to Dersh Construction in the amount of $765,858, and this is funded in part through the Iowa DOT TSIP grant. That gives you an overview of that site plan for that particular roundabout when it's all said and done with. And then here's another video that's going to show you and go through the phasing approach that we have for this intersection. We are currently in phase one right now, and that shaded area will come up right there. That's the area that's going to be addressed in phase one. The eastbound traffic on Albia Road and the northbound traffic on Wapalo Street will still be accessible at this point. And then as we go through phase two, and then finally on phase three. Each phase will be completed before we move on to the next phase, so we're not interrupting traffic as we go. And that's the end of the roundabout. I'll try to answer any questions you guys might have.
Go ahead, Victor.
I've got a quick question, Dwight, and it's not about the project necessarily. I support it and understand it. It's about tomorrow night. I was on my way down the highway, and that's blocked off halfway down there, and there's three entrances to the park where the fireworks are going to be displayed. And now there's two entrances, but there's not an exit anymore to the south. So have we thought about how traffic flow is going to be handled coming out of those two entrances tomorrow night?
Yeah, we actually talked about that this morning. I'll let the chief address that.
Okay, great. Thanks.
So I'm having some officers come in on overtime, and we're going to have officers in each... In the middle of the median there to direct traffic, but everyone coming out of the park is going to have to turn and go north. So we're going to close down the entrance into the Camp Brown when you're headed south, that first one. The second entrance exit, you're only going to be able... We're going to have an officer there directing traffic, and then same with the south entrance. So I would suggest if you're at the fireworks, after the fireworks are over, stay in your chairs for 30 minutes. Families are there, you're visiting, so just sit there and don't be in a big hurry. We know there's always a big rush. It's like a race to get out of there. So just... They just need to be patient and just wait 20, 30 minutes, and it'll be fine. We're also going to have an electrician at 34 and 149 trying to keep those lights... He's going to manually operate the lights, and that'll keep the northbound traffic open and help us get that out, so.
Outstanding. Thanks, Chief. Appreciate that.
We'll adapt and overcome.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Dwight, I think it'd be worth mentioning, since there was a lot of discussion, at least in the coffee shops, about the first roundabout, there was a engineering error, and it was our city staff, you and Phil, who found the error and corrected it. And that has been sent to Shive Hattery, and they are going to cover the cost of that because it was their mistake. It wasn't our city staff, and it wasn't DC contracting. So I think it's just good public information that unfortunate it delayed us about a week in terms of having to replace some cement. But our city staff was on top of it, and I again compliment the Engineering Department for catching that because it could have been a real nightmare had we not caught it.
Yeah, I think it's a public knowledge at this point that there was no omission in those plans, and Shive Hattery realizes that. And how that cost is going to be reimbursed to the city is being discussed right now. So the project has about $30,000 outstanding on it, and that'll be decided in the very near future.
Well said, Mayor. One other thing, too, I'd like to publicly thank DC Construction. I watched them almost daily, and they had a good-sized crew. They were working all the time, and the cleanup and everything when it was done is great. So thanks to DC and good project.
I'll pass that along if they're not listening.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for Dwight? All right, let's move on to item G.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the intent to dispose of city-owned property located at 604 East Main Street.
Good evening again, Jody.
Good evening. 604 East Main Street is a commercial building, and it is... It's a dilapidated building, and Kevin has been trying to give it away for quite a while now. Couldn't get anybody to take it. Hasn't been occupied for years. It was an auto parts store, Fred's Auto, I think, maybe is what it was before. So the roof is leaking, and it's causing a lot of interior damage. The building next door is owned by Potentials, and they want to rehabilitate the building and also stop any potential damage to their own building from water leaking through the roof of this one. So they offered the city $571 for the building, and I guess I'm hoping that the council thinks that that's acceptable.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience? I see no one in the audience to protest this or comment on it, so is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dowby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Resolution number 182, 2018, accepting the offer and approving the sale of city-owned property located at 604 East Main Street to Potentials Incorporated for the sum of $571. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 182, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Thank you.
Councilmember Dowby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for the public hearing on the intent to dispose of city-owned property located at 629 and 631 Grant Street.
Go ahead, Jody.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have a number of properties that the school district has requested to purchase, and they want to build new houses on these properties. 629 and 631 Grant Street, they would like to combine those lots and build one house on it. They... The resolution after council's discussion last meeting includes a provision that they will build all of these houses or use the lots within 10 years for houses, or the property will revert back to the ownership of the city. And I... We used a 10-year timeframe because there are eight properties, seven houses that they hope to build, and even though they hope to build one a year, things happen, and so they may need some additional time. So we built in at least three extra years for them.
This is a public hearing also. Is there anyone that wants to address this? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Thank you.
Councilmember Dowby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Resolution number 183, 2018, accepting the offer and approving the sale of city-owned property located at 629 and 631 Grant Street to the Atumwa Community School District for the sum of $1 per lot for the purpose of building housing. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 183, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Holly.
Councilmember Dowby?
Abstain.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for the public hearing on the intent to dispose of city-owned property located at 718 Center.
Go ahead, Jody.
Well, I really have nothing additional to say. They intend to build a house on this property also. They haven't yet decided what time or date they intend to use this particular lot. As the first one that they want to build is at 12:30 South Sheridan.
This is also a public hearing. If there's anybody, I see nobody stepping forward, so I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Thank you.
Councilmember Dowby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Resolution number 184, 2018, accepting the offer and approving the sale of city-owned property located at 718 Center to the Atumwa Community School District for the sum of $1 for the purpose of building housing. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution 184, 2018.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Thank you.
Councilmember Dowby?
Abstain.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the intent to dispose of city-owned property located at Lot 63 in Eastview Subdivision Number Two in the City of Atumwa/Wapalo County, Iowa.
Go ahead, Jody.
I have nothing to add previous to the two comments.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience? I see no one, so I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dowby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Resolution number 185, 2018, accepting the offer and approving the sale of city-owned property located at Lot 63 in Eastview Subdivision Number Two in the City of Atumwa/Wapalo County, Iowa to the Atumwa Community School District for the sum of $1 for the purpose of building housing. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 185, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Councilmember Dowby?
Abstain.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for the public hearing on the intent to dispose of city-owned property located at Lot 64 in Eastview Subdivision Number Two in the City of Atumwa/Wapalo County, Iowa.
Go ahead.
I have nothing further to add on this one either, Mayor.
Okay. Seeing no one in the audience, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Thank you.
Councilmember Dowby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Resolution number 186, 2018, accepting the offer and approving the sale of city-owned property located at Lot 64 in Eastview Subdivision Number Two in the City of Atumwa/Wapalo County, Iowa to the Atumwa Community School District for the sum of $1 per lot for the purpose of building housing. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 186, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Councilmember Dowby?
Abstain.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the intent to dispose of city-owned property located at 12:30 South Sheridan.
Any comments?
The only comment I'll make is the school district will be requesting a waiver of the construction fees for the new house. And so at the next council meeting, I imagine I'll have their request, and I'll be bringing that to you. This is where they intend to begin. They're preparing their construction plans now and getting ready to submit a building permit application.
Seeing no one in the audience, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dowby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Resolution number 187, 2018, accepting the offer and approving the sale of city-owned property located at 12:30 South Sheridan to the Atumwa Community School District for the sum of $1 per lot for the purpose of building housing. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 187, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Councilmember Dowby?
Abstain.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. And I should, just for the record, Chris, there's been no written objection on any of these properties that we've covered tonight.
No, I've received none.
Thank you. Okay, item H.
Resolution number 173, 2018, accepting the work is final and complete for the parking ramp repairs project and authorizing final pay request in the amount of $7,312.50 to Western Specialty Contractors. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 173, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Go ahead, Dwight.
I think I'll just jump right into this little slide presentation that we have on recapping this project. The repairs that we had addressed were... We had structural repairs that involved epoxy injection and the precast flange clip repairs. The rest were waterproofing and cosmetic, which was the routing and sealing of cracks and cementitious spall repair and precast caulk joints and waterproofing. This project was awarded to Western Specialty Contractors in Des Moines in the amount of And what you're looking at here is just on the outside of the building. And the one on the left is where we've already done some work, and you can see like right along here where we have routed out the cracks, and they haven't been sealed yet. Right up here, we have some cracks, structural cracks that need epoxy repair. Up here is about a two-inch wide joint that needs to be sealed, and when the joints are that wide, it's... Can't really expect caulking to expand that kind of a distance and expect it to stay sealed. So what we had to do is over here, we got some expansion material that compressed into that joint. And so as the concrete moves back and forth, that expansion joint will move also and keep that joint sealed. Every place else has been sealed. You can see that the cracks down here don't exist anymore. They've been filled with sealant, and then the waterproofing over the top. In this area here, this particular precast didn't have the best of concrete, and we've seen a lot of erosion right here. And if somebody was going to be walking through there, they could twist their ankle, which creates a liability problem. So what we had the contractor do is come in, mill out two inches, and put new concrete back in to eliminate that liability. Down here, this is on the upper level as well. This is one of the worst leaks that we had right here by this roof drain, and is because when the place was constructed, they never provided a place for the concrete to be able to flex back and forth. So we removed that concrete here, added a flex joint through the middle of it, leak's Again, here are some more areas where we milled it out to get rid of some poor concrete and filled it back in with new concrete. Down here, this is on the main level. We removed a four-foot strip of concrete here because what was actually happening is the water was running down the ramp and would run against this wall and down past the slab and get into the subgrade, and that was causing the stains that we saw on the outside of the parking ramp. So we filled that back up and back-sloped the concrete there to eliminate that problem. Here is on the very first floor, we had a structural problem with this retaining wall right here. This precast is actually sitting on that very edge, and there wasn't enough transference of that load into this retaining wall back here. So we've opened that back out, demolished all the bad concrete, added additional reinforcing so we had that load transfer into this retaining wall like it was designed to. You can see up here, this... Well, this crack here continues on through up there. Up here, we had to fix that with epoxy. Now down below here is a clip that had failed, and this is not... Now down below here is a clip that had failed, and this is not, this is kind of an unorthodox way of fixing this clip. What had happened is that someone forgot to install an embed plate into the concrete, and so they went in and they slotted out the concrete so they could slide in a piece of rebar, and then they could weld it to the embed plate on the other side. These pictures don't allow you to see that, but this rebar is sheared right there completely through, and then this picture shows you after we had it welded. There are several hundred clips in the parking ramp, and after we had removed all the caulking, we had to inspect each one to make sure that the welds were holding. Again, on this clip here, the weld had failed. This one here, the weld has failed, and then this is a picture of the clip after it's been rewelded. So we had to do that to about 10 different clips on the parking ramp. I mentioned to you about the staining before, and here's an example of that. Again, up above, we have like a, we got like a three-inch joint right up there between the precast, and what we did was use that same type of expansion material. We slid it in there so that we've got a good positive seal to keep that from leaking, and then we caulked the rest. Now, this was still leaking water when they did this work, and so what we had to do is we created a weep hole down at the bottom to allow that water to continue to come out. And I walked by that a couple days ago and noticed that it's not leaking water anymore, so I think hopefully how much water was in that subgrade finally drained out. Again, on the second street side, here are some more staining that we had to address. And down here, in order to fix some of this, because this wouldn't, this kept dripping water, and when it was dripping water, the contractor wasn't able to finish their repairs. So what they did was they came in and they installed the waterproofing. That required them to drill holes all the way through the precast, inject this material so that it's on the backside of the concrete, and then when water hits it, it reacts and creates an impermeable barrier so that water can't get through. So they were able to do that, and that stopped the water so that they can fix it, get the repairs done, and get the waterproofing on. Now, we mentioned earlier in the agenda about that RFP. This is the problem that was brought to our attention after all the work was done, is this ponding right here. And in its worst condition, the ponding was about three-quarters of an inch deep. It's not that big of a deal at this point, but that would be a real big liability in the wintertime. And what we were concerned about is that this was not part of the original project scope. We didn't know this problem existed, because all the cracks in that concrete slab didn't have caulking, and so the water just kind of drained through. It never was, we never noticed it until all the joints got sealed and the water here pooled. So in order to fix, this requires removal of about 335 square feet of concrete, and that's what the RFP was for. And we have plans for, the contractor to come in sometime during the month of July to get this taken care of. It'll take less than a week. People will still be able to use the parking ramp. They won't be able to use these stairs for a few days, but we should be able to get this repair done with minimal interference for the parkers. And again, a summary of the project, the final contract amount, $146,250, and we're recommending acceptance and release of retainage on this project.
Okay, thank you, Dwight. That was a good summary. Any questions for Dwight?
Your Honor, I just got a quick comment.
Sure.
Dwight, on the east side, I believe, that parking ramp where you say you installed that weep hole on that one side, and I believe that alley in there has been vacated now or given over to KTVO, I believe Larry said last time. It's kind of funny, I see on there that that stairwell, stairwell that comes down there, it goes to a platform, a sidewalk, and then there's maybe an 18-inch drop-off there to that alley. And it kind of puzzles me why there was never a handrail put in there, so when people come down that stairwell, stairway, they don't drop off into the alley and causing a liability issue there. It's just a comment, but it looks kind of odd to me.
I wondered about that, too. I know the code doesn't require anything until you get to 24 inches, but it still would just make sense to have some type of a barrier there. I wanted the same thing myself, but nothing has ever been done.
No, it's never been done. I did raise this issue two years ago. I know to city staff, there were some kids that were skateboarding down that rail, had handrail on the parking ramp, and they were sliding down that rail and then almost ending up into what was elegance by design there's back door. Now, I raised that issue two years ago, and consequently, nothing was done, but I think in the future, we need to look at that, maybe possibly put a, like you said, you could see the liability there and put a handrail or something there to stop that from happening.
Okay. Well, one of the things that we need to do at this point going forward is that every year, we need to be inspecting that ramp, because there are going to be more repairs that come up.
Okay.
And the next time we do some repairs, or maybe earlier, I guess it's up to the council. If the council wants that barrier put in, we can do that, but I would probably recommend, since it does comply with code, that we just address that and put something there the next time we make any type of repair.
Awesome. Thanks for your presentation.
That alley is open. That alley that goes back to KTVO is open.
Yeah.
I agree with what he just said, and I'd kind of forgot about that, and we talked about it a year or two ago. I personally would suggest, we have mechanics at the city garage that probably build that pretty quick and pretty easy. I would suggest we not wait. Somebody falls off there, I think we're going to be in trouble, especially if a car's coming through there.
If that's a desire of the council, I'll make it happen.
I think it's a good idea.
I think there's consensus that it should happen, so why don't you talk to Larry and give us a report the next meeting and at the end of the month?
Okay.
That'd be great.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor to complete this pay request. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Resolution number 180, 2018, awarding the contract for the Atumwa Regional Airport, 1331 Runway Reconstruction Improvement Project. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 180, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Joni, are you going to take this?
I am, Your Honor. City staff, along with the city's airport consultant, Kirk Michael, has been working diligently for a number of years to seek the approval of the Federal Aviation Administration for the reconstruction of runway 1331 at the Atumwa Regional Airport. Plans and specifications approved by the FAA for the runway reconstruction were reviewed and approved by city council during a previous public hearing. Bids were received and opened by the city on June 27 at 2:00 p.m. Project was fully advertised pursuant to Iowa law. Bid packets were received by at least 19 contractors. Six bids were received. The low bidder is Manats Inc. of Brooklyn, Iowa, in the amount of $6,440,701.04. The original engineer's opinion of total cost was approximately $12 million, so this is substantially below the projected cost. This award is subject to the FAA's final approval. The final grant should be awarded in September, which will include the costs for the previously approved, council-approved consulting agreement, extension approval, and reimbursable agreement. It is anticipated that this multimillion-dollar project will be let in the spring of 2019 with work to be completed within a year. Staff is recommending approval of the award and the authorization of the mayor to sign all grant and related construction documents on behalf of the city. The FAA will pay 90% of the cost, with the city paying 10%. In addition, this runway will be 5,885 feet long and 100 feet wide. However, the city has sought and received permission from the FAA to add 115 feet to the runway length for a total length of 6,000 feet to encourage further airport development. That portion of the cost will be in a supplemental resolution that will be presented tonight. And the total bid by Manats includes the city's cost for the additional 150 feet of runway.
Any questions for Joni?
Path, what's the delta between the engineer's estimate and the low bid?
Well, roughly half, but...
I know, but what's causing that high variance?
Well, we were excited by the amount of interest in this project. The timing is perfect. These big contractors are looking for work to start next spring, so it was bid, and all of the, all but one of the bids was in that 6.4 to 7.4 million dollar range, so they were all well within the same amount. So I don't think we have an anomaly here. I think it's a reasonable bid, and they want the work.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, if there's no other questions, the motion is to approve the resolution and do the airport reconstruction. Take the roll.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Resolution number 181, 2018, awarding the contract for the Atumwa Regional Airport, 1331 Runway Extension Project. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 181, 2018.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Thank you. Joni, I think you covered it in your last...
I did. The approximate cost for the 115-feet extension is about $450,000, and that's within the Manats bid. We just did one bid. So that's the approximate cost for that, and I believe Bob Jay has CIP committed for that.
That is correct.
Bonded for it.
Yeah. And it's a perfect time to do that extension, since they'll be there and mobilized and working at the airport, so it's a good deal for the city. Any questions for Joni or Randy? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Resolution number 188, 2018, fixing an amount for abating a nuisance against certain properties in the city of Atumwa, Iowa. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 188, 2018.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Hi, Jody, you have the floor again.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The nuisances on this resolution were abated by the city. There are three demolitions and two nuisances. They total $44,248.58. They remain unpaid, and we would like to assess them to the real estate taxes of the properties.
Okay. Any questions for Jody? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Resolution number 189, 2018, approving change order number one and accepting the work is final and complete for the Montag Lane Culvert Project and rescinding resolution number 127, 2018. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 189, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Thank you. Good evening, and Dwight, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. This project replaced an existing corrugated metal pipe culvert that was severely corroded and partially collapsed. It was replaced with a 54-inch reinforced concrete pipe culvert. The easements were approved at the January 16, 2018 council meeting. A second contract will be let to install road surface. Change order number one is decreasing the contract by $19 to adjust the quantities at the end of the contract period. This resolution will rescind resolution 127, 2018 that was approved at the May 15, 2018 council meeting. Davis County excavation of Drakeville, Iowa has completed the above reference work according to the plans and specifications. This will authorize payment and release of all retainage.
Any questions for Dwight? Okay, take the roll.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Resolution number 191, 2018, awarding the contract for the Beach Renovations Phase Three Project, 2018, Contract A, Concrete Repairs. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 191, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Go ahead, Jean.
This project consists of separate contracts to address required renovations at the beach of Atumwa located at 101 Church Street. Contract A will involve concrete repairs consisting of replacement of contract decking and sidewalk around the wave pool, including concrete demolition and horizontal concrete placement. Bids were received and opened by the city of Atumwa on June 27, 2018 at 2:00 p.m. The project was advertised on the city's and the master builders of Iowa websites. We were informed from three contractors that the plan sets were downloaded. Twelve contractors were notified about the project. Two bids were received. The low bidder is RG Construction of Atumwa, Iowa, in the amount of $143,700. The engineer's opinion of cost is $185,000. The anticipated project cost to date reflective of the recent bids are: concrete repairs, $143,700; office and kitchen remodeling, $69,085; masonry restoration, $36,081; and electrical MCC replacement, $49,400, for a total cost of $298,266. And the project cost summary to date is as follows. Contracts A and D, $298,266. Total Phase Three cost, $425,365.62. The funding available is $700,000, and we received a grant for the sign for $25,000 from the Waplo County Foundation.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Jean? Comments? Take the roll.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Resolution number 192, 2018, awarding the contract for the Beach Renovations Phase Three Project, 2018, Contract B, Office Kitchen Remodel Project. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 192, 2018.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Thank you. Go ahead, Jean.
This project consists of separate contracts to address required renovations at the beach of Atumwa located at 101 Church Street. Contract B base bid will involve remodeling of interior office spaces, including selective demolition, new and existing door replacement, gypsum wall repairs, new ceiling tile painting, flooring, new LED lighting, and selective plumbing and electrical repairs. The alternate bid includes ceiling replacement in the shower areas and outdoor canopy areas above the front entrance. Bids were received and opened by the city of Atumwa on June 27, 2018 at 2:00 p.m. The project was advertised on the city's and master builders of Iowa websites. We were informed from three contractors that the plan sets were downloaded. Twelve contractors were notified about the project. Two bids were received. The low bidder is Krisner Contracting of Atumwa, Iowa, in the amount of $69,085 for both base bid and alternate bid. The engineer's opinion of the cost is $80,000.
Any questions for Jean? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Resolution number 193, 2018, awarding the contract for the Beach Renovations Phase Three Project, 2018, Contract C, Masonry Restoration Project. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 193, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Thank you. Go ahead, Jean.
This project consists of separate contracts to address required renovations at the beach of Atumwa located at 101 Church Street. Contract C will involve masonry restoration, including caulking of random moving cracks and control joints, selective masonry repairs found throughout the exterior of the indoor pool facility. Bids were received and opened by the city of Atumwa on June 27, 2018 at 2:00 p.m. The project was advertised on the city and the master builders of Iowa websites. We were informed from three contractors that the plan sets were downloaded. Twelve contractors were notified of the project. Three bids were received. The low bidder is Krisner Contracting of Atumwa in the amount of $36,081. The engineer's opinion of the cost is $77,000. All the other numbers are still the same.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Resolution number 194, 2018, awarding the contract for the Beach Renovations Phase Three Project, 2018, Contract D, Electrical MCC Replacement Project. Recommendation: Pass and adopt resolution number 194, 2018.
Move the recommendation as presented. Move the recommendation as presented. Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Gene.
Contract D will involve select electrical repairs, replacing two motor control centers and switches for the indoor and outdoor pools. Bids were received and opened by the city of Atumwa on June 27, 2018 at 2:00 p.m. The low bidder is Von Mann Electric of Newton, Iowa, in the amount of $49,400. The engineer's opinion of the cost is $75,000.
Any questions for Gene? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Resolution number 195, 2018, waiving the right of review for Atumwa East Substation Subdivision and rescinding resolution number 157, 2018. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 195, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Good evening, Kevin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Council, recall that most recently with resolution 157, 2018, that council had made the decision to waive our right of review in our extraterritorial area within one mile of our city for Atumwa East Substation Subdivision. However, as luck would have it, we have had an alteration to our description, our legal description of this property, in the amount of one word. And so we have to come back now, and we have to rescind with this resolution, resolution number 157, 2018. And then we have to pass 195, 2018 to do the same action that we did before prior with 157, 2018. I would entertain any questions members may have.
Any questions for Kevin?
Kevin, what was the word?
I was afraid one of you were going to ask me that. Frankly, I did not read the difference. I merely copied and pasted it, but I can get back to you about that.
Nothing critical, right? Just a...
I think it was not a critical word.
Okay, I'm assuming it was.
I should have probably made one up, but I thought somebody was going to ask me that.
Just a technicality.
Somebody was going to ask me, testing me.
Thanks for your patience in waiting till the end of the agenda for that.
It's the most important thing we could do tonight.
Okay.
And I didn't even know the word.
Motion's made and seconded to rescind and pass this new resolution. Any other comments? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. We always, well, before I go to the public comments, I don't see any public present, but do want to make a couple of comments. I think it's a great honor that we have Dwight Domon, our city engineer, was appointed to the state STEM council and is going to be working with that group. I think that's very good for our community and for southeast Iowa, so glad you're involved with that, Dwight. And I know you've worked with some of the engineers at John Deere on that, so appreciate your involvement. Also, want to recognize our own Dr. Jim Lindenmeyer was appointed to the state board of regents, and I think that is, again, another great honor for our community. And as you know, he's retired from Indian Hills, but certainly as an educator, has been a very good spokesman for our community, and we wish him the best in his new appointment. This past weekend, I represented the city and the city council and attended the Remember Our Fallen Veterans. It's a mobile memorial display that was out at the mall. And our local Schiller family, Bill and Liz Schiller, have been just outstanding. They hosted a run dinner for the veterans that ran through our community about two weeks ago, and in this weekend, they hosted the memorial display at the mall. It was very moving, very, very nicely done, and I just want to recognize their, their involvement and support. And I think with both Independence Day being tomorrow and Memorial Day weekend, and I was shocked when I heard this, that 80% of the general public does not understand what Memorial Day represents. And when you think of our veterans who've been injured and/or made the supreme sacrifice, giving their life, we certainly need to remember our veterans throughout the year. So again, hats off to the Schiller family for their work in that, that project. Two other comments I'd make, I've been attending the area regional planning commission's policy board, and I just wanted to make the council aware that that's an appointment and can be anybody representing the city, but I was asked to do that, and I have continued to do that, and I find it's a very good group. It's 10 members from county boards of supervisors and another city mayor. And we look at long-range planning for a variety of grant funds that come through regional planning. They just submitted a new four-year plan for transportation. They will oversee approximately $4.5 million of transportation improvement costs in our six-county area. If somebody else would like to do that, I certainly don't want to prevent somebody else in the city from doing that, but I'll continue to do that until you tell me otherwise. And then last, I think, we've been talking about a new logo for two years, and in my opinion, it's time for the council to make a decision and either accept the new logo or vote it down, because we've been asking about color and how we might approach that. I think there should be a recommendation from our city staff about, do we want to do it, and how would we phase it in if we did that? Because it's going to be a fairly costly endeavor to do that over a period of time. I would not recommend that we do it in one swoop. It's just too, too many things when you think of letterhead and vehicles and windows that we have our logo on now. So I would ask that the council give that some serious thought and come prepared at the meeting on the 24th, either vote it up or vote it down, because the other civic groups have adopted the big O with the exclamation point, "Let Us Surprise You" is the tagline. And I just think we need to either get with the program or move on. So think about that and give Andy and me some feedback, and we'll go from there. Are there any comments from council? We added this on under Jay, Council reports, because I think one of the things that we just seem to have so much business here at the city, we don't have time to really have some discussion. And if there's any item, I don't ever want to limit discussion from the council or staff members who have some ideas that we need to pay attention to. So this is your chance to bring something up, and I see, Victor, you have your hand up, so go ahead.
Well, it's not, it's not new business, but at the risk of making, you know, this meeting run a couple minutes longer, I wanted to clarify some of my remarks about the 12-hour shifts. First of all, I'm absolutely in support of pursuing those to Councilman Dalby's comments. You know, I don't want to pull the plug on this. If anything, I want to expedite it. And I guess that that caused me a little frustration, and it probably does the council too, and I'm sure it does Chief McAndrew. You know, nor am I denouncing Chief McAndrew's efforts. I'm sure he's doing everything he can to try to acquire and attract new hires here. Nor do I think the written test is discriminatory, for the record, but that's just part of the process. There's, there's a lot of factors involved in the hiring process, and Chief McAndrew and Officer Hux met with city administrator Morris and Councilman Dalby and myself, and did a really good job of explaining what that hiring process consists of. I guess, you know, our number one priority is public safety, and I'm sure Chief McAndrew's number one priority is the safety and well-being of his officers and our community and its citizens. So, you know, we talked about hitting a moving dartboard, and I guess, you know, I just wish we had more darts, you know? And to Mark's comment, I thought Mark's comment was great. We need to, this needs to be a regular, ongoing conversation, and we need to come up with more ideas. And I'm not sure, you know, it's the council's responsibility to come up with those ideas. Collectively, as a city, we need to come up with those ideas, and it doesn't matter where they come from. A good idea is a good idea, and we need to, you know, we need to look under every rock and create some new ways of looking at this. Thanks.
Great, good comments. Any other comments from council?
I guess I would just say, you know, with tomorrow being the 4th of July, I hope everybody in the community has a safe and fun holiday.
One last comment. We did have a team of people from the community visit with a out-of-state business, and they are still looking at Atumwa for a possible location, and it is a manufacturing firm, and I'm going to a meeting on Thursday of this week, so I'll certainly communicate with you if there's any change in that, but we're very optimistic and hopeful that it might result in a establishment of a business here in the community that would be really helpful to all of us. So I'll keep you posted, but just keep your fingers crossed that they say yes and that we can meet all the necessary asks that they're going to make, I'm sure, of any community that they go to. So we'll keep you posted on that. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to address an item not on the agenda? I see somebody stepping to the microphone to identify yourself.
Yeah, Matt Brech, 11573 Rutledge Road. I got volunteered by my loser softball buddies to come say something, and I told them I all knew you and could talk to you individually, and they said, no, talk to them in front of the council. I play softball, adult softball. I was on the soccer committee for Legacy, and I know there's all this discussion about building soccer fields and building softball fields and a complex. But there's some issues at the adult softball field, and so I assume everybody knows Highway 34 and 63 there. The dugouts have holes in them or leaking, which if the roof would have been fixed, you wouldn't have rotting of the wood, but the wood's rotting on several of the dugouts. There's some other small issues that they're complaining about, and as a dude, I went and used the restroom the other day, and as a dude, I don't mind a little dirt, and I don't mind a little nastiness, but it was pretty, I wouldn't sit on the toilet if, if I needed to. And so I went back to the, to the dugout and made a comment as a joke, and the women were livid, because there are ladies that play softball, especially on the church side, and they won't use the restroom. I read through the contract. I had seen the contract of a couple years ago, and in the contract, the city's responsible for the upkeep. I don't know if that's changed in the last couple years, but I got volunteered just to mention it, that there are some issues over there, and I know the people running it do the best they can, and they're, I don't know anything about their situation and if, what they're supposed to do versus what the city's supposed to do. But I told my loser friends, who I love, that I would bring it up and see if somebody could look into this and figure out. The women were, didn't care about the dugout, they didn't care about all the other little minor issues, but they really cared about the bathrooms. So I just thought I would mention it and say it, and hopefully we can figure out something to make them a little, little better. I don't know, $14,000 toilets would work, but whatever, you know what I'm saying.
Thank you, Matt. We'll ask city administrator to look into that and give us report back. Is there anything else for the, to the council? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.